Good evening, everybody. Glad to see everybody here on the Zoom squares for this evening. We got our August 30th joint meeting in the West Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Association and the East Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Association Board of Directors.
How's any progress?
For the West Turlock. For the West Turlock GSA Board, I now call this joint special meeting to order at 5:00 on August 30th. Ferrazini, do you want to call the meeting to order at this time?
Yeah, yeah. Eastside Chairman, I'll call it to order.
Thank you, Al. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and pursuant to executive order in 29-20, this meeting is being held by conference call without a physical meeting location. This meeting was noted in accordance with the Brown Act. In addition to a physical posting of the agenda at 333 East Canal Drive in Turlock, this meeting was also noticed online and emailed to all sub-basin's interested parties list. This joint meeting is being recorded and will be posted online. The board secretaries are giving or taking minutes as well. Materials are available online at turlockgroundwater.org. We encourage public participation during the special meeting. We'll receive public comment during the public comment portion of the agenda. Feel free to use the raise your hand feature if you'd like. It is within the reactions menu located on Zoom. If you're only using the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone. We'll also have additional times for public comment on specific agenda items as well. A special note tonight, the GSA boards were receiving a presentation on draft chapter five of their groundwater sustainability plan, followed by presentation. The boards may act to release that part of the chapter for public comment. To be clear, the boards are not finalizing the GSP in whole or part, but rather simply releasing chapters to formally kick off public review. With that, let's get the meeting started with a board roll call for each GSA, followed by participant list identification. Ms. Lang, can you please call roll for the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA?
Yes, thank you Chair Alamo. Director Alvarez.
Here.
Director Buck.
Here.
Director Chiesa.
Here.
Director Espinoza.
Present.
Director Larson. Alternate Director Franco. Director Lopez. Alternate Director Silveira. Director Maldonado.
Present.
Director Odom. Director Odom.
Richard Lindo is my alternate and he will be the voting member tonight.
Very good. Thank you so much. Alternate Director Lindo.
Here.
Vice Chair Juritzma.
Here.
And Chair Alamo.
President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have a quorum of the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA Board. Chair Russini, Mr. Jesse, do you want to start a roll call? Happy to help.
Call the roll call, sure.
Okay, thanks. Director Ward.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Director Ulrich.
Here.
Here.
Great. Director Eltal.
This is Matt Beaman with the Mercedes Irrigation District. I don't know for sure if he's going to call in, but a representative from MIDs here.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Perea.
Present.
Thank you. And Chair Russini.
Present.
Okay, at this time, there is a quorum of the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA Board. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there any participants that would like to voluntarily identify themselves at this time?
Member Larson from the city of Turlock is here. I joined a little bit late. Hi, everyone.
Get a call.
Ward Burrows, alternate from Eastside Water District on the GSA Board.
You are. There are no other participants at this time. I will move on to approval of the minutes. Looking for a motion and a second from the West Turlock Sub Basin Board for the approval of the July 8th special meeting minutes. So, Juritzma? I'll be the second. I got Curtis, who is the second?
Espinoza, whichever.
Thank you, Rodrigo. We got a first and a second. Is there any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposing side? Minutes passed. Next on the agenda, public comment period. Interested persons in the audience or in the Zoom audience as we are today are welcome to introduce any topic within the agency's jurisdiction. No action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that the boards may briefly respond to the comments, refer them out of the staff, or request to be placed on a future agenda. Is there any public comment at this time?
Thank you Chair Alamo. At this time, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll proceed right into staff updates, GSP update. Michael.
Good evening Chair Alamo. Not much to report other than the technical advisory committee has been meeting almost twice a week for the last few weeks. After this meeting tonight, we'll be close to finalizing a number of other chapters through the GSP process. So there will be more meetings like this to get information out to the public for their review as we get together and kind of finalize our GSP, which is due obviously to be adopted by January of next year. One thing I just want to remind the participants tonight that the GSA as a joint powers authority has the legislative authority to adopt the GSP. So if you are going to go to your individual boards to seek input or validation of what's in the final GSP towards the end of this year, please plan for that, put that in your time schedule. You look at it kind of October, November time because January, the latest, the GSA Board does have to adopt the plan and move it forward. So again, all the staff and board members out there, just be aware, if you want to have the final GSP reviewed by your individual boards, please make time for that in the schedule because we are starting to run out of time and the end of the year will be quickly upon us. That's my update, Chair Alamo.
Update, any comments or questions for Michael? Hearing none, we'll proceed with our budget update. Michael Clipper.
Good evening, everyone. For the activity for July of 2021, you can see for the basin-wide account, this is for both the east and west GSAs. So this will cover all the projects. So we started with the month and the fiscal year with $958,193.38. We spent $48,481.95 and ended the month with $909,711.43. And then scrolling down to the next page, you can see all the activity around the budget for the year, what we anticipate spending and receiving in revenue. Any questions?
Questions or comments for Michael on the budget update? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
We'll proceed right into our agenda item F1, encroachment permit for monitoring wells. Valerie?
Yep, thank you Chair Alamo. This is an item just for the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA. And it is to authorize the West Turlock GSA to submit applications for encroachment permits to stay on Sauce Marsete County and authorize the board chair to approve such permits. We brought you some similar items a few months ago. There were templates for easements. But doing some of this Prop 68 well identification and monitoring, we've found that sometimes on private property that is challenging. So we have some of placing of wells in the county right of way. So we didn't anticipate that. So you've seen this kind of project before. They're the same wells, there are no new wells. But what we didn't anticipate is needing an encroachment permit. So it's in line with the easements and the recording documents you've seen previously, but we thought we'd bring it back to the West Turlock Board just to make sure that you understand that we'll be getting an encroachment permit to have these wells in the county right of way. There's also a specific agenda, a report in your package with a few more details and I'm happy to take any questions that the board has. But we're looking for a motion authorizing staff to submit encroachment permits and approve the permits if necessary.
Valerie, any questions or comments? We're willing to make a motion on this. All move as stated. Juritzma? Thank you Curtis, is there a second?
Give us a second.
Thank you Vito. As a proper mover, a second, is there any further comments or questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Declare the motion passes.
Thank you.
Continue on with agenda item number two. Groundwater Sustainability Plan Review of Chapter Five, what we're all here for. And who's going to kick this off for us? I think that will be me, Michael, or are you starting?
So Board Chair Alamo and Board Chair Russini, we have with us Ali Tagavi from Woodard and Curran. He is a consultant working with Todd Groundwater on this project. Him, he and Dominic Amador have been working on the water budget chapter. And so Ali's going to make his presentation now. And I'm assuming, Ali, would you like questions at the end or as you go? Or what's your preferred method of work?
Only best to keep the questions towards the end unless there is a specific clarification, you know, question on each slide. I'll be happy to address that.
Okay, so Ali, welcome and off you go.
Thank you so much. Let me go ahead and share my screen now. Good evening, folks. My name is Ali Tagavi from Woodard and Curran. And I'm here with my colleague Dominic Amador. Very pleased to be here in the evening and presenting to you folks review of the groundwater sustainability plan, chapter five, the water budget section of the GSP that has been in the works for a while. The topics that we're going to cover, other than an introduction, is going to be a very few slides on what the tool and analysis technology is that we use for development of the water budget and various other analysis of the groundwater sustainability plan. And then we'll dive right into the details of the water budgets. There is a document, the chapter five has been posted on the website, which is a draft water budget. And towards the end of this particular presentation, I believe there is motions, recommended motions for releasing of this chapter for public review. The water budget section of the plan is mandated by the Department of Water Resources and by the regulation for several other budget contexts, for historical conditions and the current conditions and future projected conditions. As such, we've developed a numerical modeling tool that uses basically the details of the various topics and various data sets within the Turlock Sub Basin to support the development of the water budget as well as supporting the analysis of the groundwater flow and the surface water flow. This particular diagram, it's very busy, but it shows basically the flow chart of the steps that we have gone through over a course of about a year or so to develop the model. The model is based on the integrated water flow model, which is a code that was developed by the Department of Water Resources and is supported by DWR. And it'll be used to evaluate the various topics of the GSP. And it's an analysis tool that is used throughout the state, including the Modesto and the Merced sub-basins nearby. It is recommended by DWR to use this particular tool. And so to that end, we've used the Central Valley portion of this or version of this model to evaluate the Turlock Sub Basin groundwater conditions. The tool was put together over the course of several years by DWR. The vision was to have a tool to better understand the historical evolution of the water resources in the Central Valley and the sub-basins within the Central Valley. And also use it for planning of the future water management programs, including groundwater sustainability program at the regional and local scale under the different land use conditions, water use conditions, and climatic conditions. The Central Valley model that DWR has developed does cover the Turlock Sub Basin in fairly reasonably detailed resolution. However, at the same time, we've gone ahead and developed much more detailed information for the Turlock Sub Basin over the course of about a year to make sure that the proper land use conditions, water use conditions, and other climatic related conditions are represented, not only the Turlock Sub Basin, but also to the north in the Modesto Sub Basin, as well as a good portion of the Merced Sub Basin and the Delta Mendota to the west, in order to make sure that the subsurface flow conditions between Turlock and to the northwest and south are properly represented to the extent that is possible. The statistics on the right show the various sort of smaller units that the model represents. Each one of these units that are shown in here, the hexagons or the quadrilateral elements in here, each one of them have significant amount of data and information with respect to the various, not only above surface and land surface conditions, but also subsurface conditions. And so each one of these elements represent those conditions and each one of them, they talk to each other over the course of many months and many years that are incorporated in the model. Significant amount of data and information have gone into this particular model, not only by DWR, but later on by the consultants working on this particular GSP. Those include stream network and geometry, hydrogeologic conditions, stratigraphic conditions and soil conditions, but also lots of information with respect to the land use, the cropping pattern and ET and cropping water use, rainfall data, stream flow data, surface water data, and also groundwater data. And then eventually, we also looked at what's coming in from the foothills in terms of runoff and rainfall runoff, as well as various groundwater conditions and boundaries from the northwest and the east, as I suggested. And eventually, we calibrated the model to not only groundwater flow and level conditions, but also to stream flow conditions along Twalome and Merced, as well as San Joaquin River. What was most critical and important in this development of the model was the stakeholder collaboration. We worked very closely with both the East Turlock and the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA technical folks, both at the agencies, as well as consultants, to make sure that the data and information are properly representing the conditions to the extent that is possible. All of the data that had been compiled and collected are of course based on the latest and best available data that have been available to date. The model is developed and calibrated based on that best available data at the time, but there's always room for improvement, always room for update. And so the model and the analysis are definitely subject to change over time, subject to updates over time as additional data and information become available. So the data that's been incorporated into model so far, as well as the model currently is fairly robust. However, it has certain uncertainties. And I want to make sure that we all understand where those uncertainties could potentially come from. Part of the uncertainties are based on the structural uncertainties within the model as the mathematical theories representing the natural and physical system are incorporated into the code and how the solution techniques are represented and how those represent the physical system. All of those are subject to uncertainty. We're talking about a fairly complex and integrated physical system in terms of hydrology, the geology and hydrogeology. And we're trying to represent all of those in mathematical terms. And so those are all subject to uncertainties. More importantly, there's uncertainties relative to the data in terms of both over time as well as over space. The conditions with respect to the land use, the cropping pattern, in terms of rainfall conditions and distribution of the rainfall conditions, in terms of just understanding the physical features underground and the thickness of the aquifer system, the coarseness and the fineness of the aquifer system, and the interrelation between the river and the aquifer system. All of those are subject to information and data that we have available to date. And of course, there's uncertainties associated with those. And so we need to recognize those uncertainties. There are also uncertainties with respect to the calibration of the model and eventually also uncertainties with respect to projection into the future. Based on the regulation, we need to project the current conditions 50 years into the future. And so as you can all imagine, we not only don't have information in terms of the rainfall conditions and the hydrologic conditions, but also the growth in the demand areas, the cropping patterns and the land use conditions. Those are all projections that we've made based on the best available information and data that we have at our fingertips today, but they're all subject to uncertainty. So we just got to understand those and put those in context. So having said all of that, I'd like to dive into what sort of information have been the results of this modeling exercise, but also data analysis exercise, which was all put together in a collaborative environment with the West and the East Turlock GSA, tac, members of the tac, technical advisory group, as well as the consultants who have been supporting both GSAs. I wanted to define the timeframes that are associated with the water budgets. The regulations, the SIGMA regulations call for three specific timeframes with respect to the water budgets. The left panel here shows the conditions with respect to the historical conditions. The regulations call for approximately minimum of a 10 years of historical period to be used for historical water budget. And that's what we've used. We've used actually more than that. We've used 20-plus years. The current conditions are what's happening today out there. Based on the best available data, we've all decided to use the 2010 water use and land use conditions, which is prior to the drought in order to get a better representation of the land use and water use conditions. If we were to take the latest data, say from 2020 or even prior to that, to 2015 land use survey, we would have been subject to certain crops that have been, or lands that which were fallowed. The specific water use conditions, which are mostly biased by the drought condition as well as the hydrology, which may be biased by the drought condition. So we all decided, well, maybe 2010 is a more representative conditions with respect to the current water budgets. And so that's what we've used and I'm going to be showing results for that particular vintage. The projected conditions are projected 50 years into the future in terms of the land use and water use conditions. So for the urban areas, we've used the 2015 urban water management plans to project forward the not only population and the unit water use, but also the water supply conditions and the mix of the water supply conditions. And as well as for the ag areas, we've assumed that the current basically cropping pattern and the current footprint of the ag lands are in place. And we've assumed that in short of any other projections and crystal ball on how the ag pattern and cropping pattern is going to look like in the future, we've assumed the present day would persist and continue in the future. And we've also assumed that there's no additional undeveloped areas that would be turned over into ag lands and developed into ag lands. And the hydrologic conditions are basically replicate of the last 50 years. We've also used that same condition and superimposed on it climate change patterns based on the DWR projections, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute. All of that model budget concepts and context are wrapped into basically three specific sort of physical features. The land surface system, which is what's happening over the land, the groundwater system, and then the stream and the canal system. They're all interconnected and interrelated. And as such, we've incorporated all of those interconnectivities in the model and will be presenting the results of what all that may look like. The water budgets are going to be presented for both the sub-basin scale, but also at the GSA scale. These here, the map shows basically the areas that are associated with the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA, as well as the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA. I talked about hydrology. I like this chart here particularly because it shows the annual rainfalls that the state uses in their model from all the way back in 1922 to just about present day. And you'll notice that there is a lot of wet cycles. That's when this line here moves upwards. And these are the wet cycles. And there's a lot of dry cycles and the dry spells, right? So the state uses this drought from the last century, early part of the century, from 2028 to 32 as the sort of drought of the record. But in my opinion, we've got a lot more recent drought conditions that we need to look at. And so we're actually looking at those drought conditions, which is mostly over here. I also want to draw your attention to the fact that, you know, if you look at these rainfall charts here, even though we've got dry spells and dry cycles, but there's not very many years that the rainfall drops, you know, fairly low, so to speak. But in most more recent years, you've noticed that the rainfall conditions and the dry years are a lot lower and a lot more dry spells. But in most more recent years, you've noticed that the rainfall conditions and the dry years are a lot lower and a lot more dry spells. So this is calling for more extreme conditions actually, and so that's why I think this latest drought spell. Is probably a lot, a lot more representative of what we have today and what we may be going through in the future. We've used uh, a certain period of model for historical period, which uh, which is the basis for the water budget that I'm going to be showing you in a minute. And we calibrated the model to that period. We're using uh, upwards of a fifty years of hydrologic cycle from nine, water years nineteen sixty-nine to twenty eighteen. To represent our model projections, but also the baseline conditions. So these are the two periods that we're going to be looking at in just a few minutes. So the fifty year projected hydrology is from water year nineteen sixty-nine to twenty eighteen. So what's in the land and water use condition, that first box that I showed you earlier, that basically shows. Uh, in terms of ag conditions on an annual basis, what the ag water demand estimates where. Historically from nineteen ninety-one to two thousand fifteen, these are annual water demand estimates. By the entirety of the ag uh, ag lands within the Turlock Sub Basin. And so the uh, bars to the top here show the groundwater pumping and the surface water supplies. That have been used to meet this ag demand historically. I also have to the right here, that same uh, sort of components of the water budget, but projected forward into the future fifty years. So this is based on the current ag lands and uh, and, and uh, estimate of the groundwater pumping to meet the demand. Short of what the surface water supplies would potentially be. We also have similar type of thing for the urban areas, historically, the urban uh, water use and urban demand was uh. Sort of to the tune of about sixty thousand acre feet and all of which have been uh, have been met by groundwater. And, and so you notice that the conservation measures that have been put in place over the past. Few years, past decade or so, reducing the demand and reducing the pumping. However, as we look into the future, population growth and expansion of the urban footprint increases water demand. And associated water, uh, groundwater use over the course of the next uh, twenty years or so upwards uh, to twenty forty. And then past twenty forty, we're keeping all of that pretty much level. Because we don't have projections from our urban water management plans beyond twenty forty projection. So when we look at both of these and we summarize them in bar charts here, I'm going to give you a lay of the land as to what this all means. So these bar charts showing the Turlock Sub Basin land and water use budgets, basically we're showing the total demand. Uh, for the ag and the urban upwards of about eight hundred and fifty thousand acre feet of demand historically. Of which uh, all of that demand is met by surface supplies for the ag. And then ag pumping and then urban pumping, so these should match up against each other basically. So this is the supply mix over the average of that historical condition. If we look at that same thing based on the current conditions, which we defined it as the twenty ten conditions, pre drought. Uh, the ag demand was higher somewhat, and so was the urban demand somewhat. Uh, but also this is the mix of the surface water supplies and the groundwater pumping. And then when we look into the future, uh, the um, ag demand is uh, reduced uh, somewhat. Because of the urban footprint expansion, so the urban demand has gone up. But at the same time, ag pumping continues uh, as um, as before, pretty much. But more than the historical conditions. And the surface supplies are somewhat lower, and that is reflective of the potential future regulatory requirements. On the Tuolumne River for the most part, but also Merced River. When we look at this broken down by each sub, each GSA, this particular one is showing the same charts for the Western Locks up GSA. And so we're looking at approximately six hundred thousand, a little bit more than six hundred thousand acre feet of historical condition demand. The current condition is just about the same. Uh, and the future, uh, the ag demand is somewhat uh, somewhat uh, higher. Uh, overall, though, the demand is shorter and, and less, you know, on the Western Locks of Basin. And that is reflective of the, uh, again, the uh, urban uh. Increased urban footprint increase, but also um, changes in the irrigation efficiency patterns. That are projected on the Western Lock GSA. On the east, and I've, I've tried to kept the, keep the scales the same, that's why these are somewhat uh, shorter. But if you notice, the uh, the, uh, there is very little urban demand, this label shouldn't even be there. For the most part, ag demand is there and ag demand historically was the two of what, two hundred twenty thou, two hundred twenty thousand acre feet. Of which most of it was, was met by groundwater, but there was a little bit of a surface water also, which was basically the Merced North Side Canal. As well as uh, some deliveries of surface water by TID to um. I think upwards of about two thousand acre feet or so, uh, to some of the lands on the east side. When we look at that same thing in the future and projected conditions, you notice that there is approximately, this ag demand is gone up basically to. Uh, more than two hundred fifty thousand acre feet, which also requires additional groundwater pumping to meet that demand. So I'd like to talk about operational water budget in just a minute. And, and, and for a few minutes to kind of give you an idea what is happening from standpoint of operations. And by that, we mean uh, the water budget from operational standpoint presents components of the water budget. That reflect direct processes that happens between the demand and the supply. So all we're saying is we're going to take everything else that's natural. Out of the equation and out of the picture and just look at how much is pumped from the groundwater system. And how much is deeper collided into the system, and, and so we look at the balance between the pumping and what's deeper collided into the system. And then so to that end, we're looking at, for example, at the basin scale, at sub basin scale, we're looking at total pumping over time. This is historical and this one here is projected conditions. And how much deeper relation we get and how much also we get from the canals and reservoir recharge. So this is the conveyance recharge basically. Okay, and so when we look at the balance between these two here, that's what this chart is about. What this chart shows is every time we have the bars in the positive, that means there is contributions to the groundwater system. And when it is negative, that means we're taking water out of the system. Okay, and so you'll notice that over the projected conditions, we've got somewhat more times and more frequently. We're taking water out of the system than we're putting water into the system. So as a result, and as I look at this uh, in long-term average conditions. Notice that the Turlock Sub Basin as a whole um, historically uh, used to be uh, basically. They, they used to pump so much water, four hundred thousand acre feet. And, and there's um, approximately three hundred fifty thousand acre feet that was put in. So historically, we've been in overdraft condition to the tune of about forty thousand acre feet. And the exact numbers are all in the memorandum that we've, we've submitted. When we look at that, at broken down by the west side and the east side. Notice that on the west side, the groundwater pumping is less than what was put in. In terms of not only canal seepage, but also the deeper relation. And so as a result, the Westerlock looks like they're basically recharging the basin somewhat more to the tune of about hundred thousand acre feet. And then on the east side, there is a lot more pumping going on compared to the deeper relation. And this deeper relation is reflective of the deeper relation from rainfall and applied water. And so to that end, the, on the east side, you'll notice that there is approximately a hundred fifty thousand of draw. Over average conditions during the historical period. When we look at that same conditions uh, during the two, twenty ten uh, period, same condition exists. Uh, during the uh, uh, current condition, the twenty ten condition, the entire sub basin is in overdraft. By about uh, somewhere around seventy thousand acre feet, and then that's the breakdown between the west and the east. And then uh, when we look at the uh, projected condition, we have similar type of picture. So the picture in terms of the breakdown between the GSAs is not changing significantly. Uh, other than uh, the future projection has somewhat of an impact. Uh, both in terms of uh, the west and the east has an impact on where that water is coming from, and that is very important in the context of sigma. So that's what I'd like to uh, touch bases over the next few slides here. So this is a lot more complex, but I'm going to make it very simple in just the next slide. And, and this one here is showing the entirety of all of the details of what goes into the water budget on an annual basis. Anything that's positive in here is basically a stack bar chart of the contributions. From all the different sources that we've identified to the groundwater system, and we call those inflows into the system, right? So it's a deeper relation, the recharge from the canals and conveyance canals. And anything that comes in from the foothills and so on, so forth. And in the negative in here, it shows how much water is taken out of the system or has naturally moved out of the system. So in that context, it's the groundwater pumping that we pump out of the groundwater system. But also in the case of historical conditions, groundwater was discharging to the river system. And so that's also flow out of the groundwater system into the river system. When we look at that same thing over the projected condition, the picture changes somewhat. Notice that most of the discharge to the river, uh, from the river to the aqua, I'm sorry, the discharge from the aquifer system. To the river has changed, you don't see as many blues down here and you see the blues mostly up here. What that means is the rivers are contributing or are projected and estimated to be contributing. Uh, to the groundwater system, so they become part of the influence. Reason that happens is the continuous draw on the system over the course of the next fifty years. Is drawing groundwater levels down so much so that we're actually changing the. Uh, system from uh, the, the river system from overall a gaining system to a losing system. And so the rivers are going to be contributing a whole lot more to the groundwater system. If the projections happen as, as we're looking at it and as we've looked at under the baseline conditions. So what that means is, this chart here is showing basically the change in the groundwater storage over time. Historically, we've drawn the groundwater storage down and down to the tune of approximately. Uh, sixty thousand acre feet or so on the average. And so we're expecting that that same drawdown on the groundwater system would continue over uh, into, into the future. The bars here are showing the rainfall conditions, so you'll notice that there is variability. So every time we have the wet spell, which is more rainfall, we have somewhat of a gain in the groundwater system. That's because we're not only getting uh, rainfall runoff from the foothills. But also rain on the land as well as higher stream flows, and so we're getting more storage. But then when there's a dry spell, we're getting more pumping and also less rainfall, and so the groundwater let, storage. Drops down, and then with the wet spell, we get higher uh, groundwater storage. And then again, towards the end, this is like the approximately twenty fifteen or twenty eleven to current day uh, drought conditions. Again, we're going through a decline in groundwater storage. And so to summarize that, again, I go back to this summary stack bar charts. We look at what is inflow to the groundwater system and what is outflow from the groundwater system. The inflows are the deeper relation from rainfall and applied water. Anything that's coming in from the rivers and the reservoir and the canal system, reservoir being the Turlock uh, lake. And the canal system, which is all the conveyance canals, as well as any subsurface inflows from the uh. Uh, adjacent and the neighboring sub basin, that being the Modesto, uh, Merced and uh, and, and the Delta Mendota. And so on, on the outflow side, this is the groundwater production and pumping. And what's leaving the groundwater system, not only to the uh, to this, to the neighboring sub basins, but also to the river system. So if this is, there's an imbalance, then there's water that's coming from the storage. And so historically, we're looking that we've been declining, and so we had to draw water from storage to make the bars balanced basically. Current condition the same way and the future conditions the same way. But notice that historically, we've had, you know, somewhere around sixty thousand acre feet of uh, draw from the storage. What we're projecting is there is less draw from the storage from theoretical standpoint, because we're not getting as much. But because the groundwater levels are going to be lower, we're going to be drawing more water actually from the rivers. And so notice that the orange bar here is much smaller than the orange bar in here. Because uh, what we're doing is we're basically changing the regime between the surface water and the groundwater system. If you notice the previous slide showed you that the river system is going to be in a losing mode as opposed to gaining. And so the rivers are going to be contributing to the groundwater system, and that's not a good thing from sigma standpoint. That is one of the major undesirable results that sigma picks on. So for those of you who are interested in a lot more detail, uh, we put this box diagram together, which shows you what happens under the historical conditions. Between the groundwater system, the land surface system and the stream system. And so the only one that I want to really draw your attention to is that historically, we've actually been discharging upwards of about fifty seven thousand acre feet to the river system. The groundwater system was contributing to the river system. Yet we had approximately sixty four thousand acre feet of draw on the groundwater uh, in the storage. When we look at that same thing under the projected condition, notice that this arrow changed uh, sign or changed direction. And so the system, the river system now is contributed or is, is projected to contribute. To the groundwater system to the tune of about thirty eight thousand acre feet, so that is, like I said, it's not a good sign. And that is a major undesirable result, even though our groundwater storage uh, decline is less. But it is less because of the additional contribution from the river system. There's, there are somewhat more changes in here as well. Subsurface flows between the Merced and Modesto and Sa- and, 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 and the Delta Mendota. Uh, with, with the Turlock Sub Basin change as well, the direct, not the direction as much, but the uh, so, the, the magnitudes change. And so because we're drawing the groundwater levels lower, again, we're also inducing and inviting additional flows from the neighboring sub basins as well. So I want to go back to uh, this favorite uh, box diagram or the uh, bar chart diagram again. And, and just show you that, you know, on the Westerlock Sub Basin. Again, notice that uh, the change in the storage, what used to be higher in the historical condition is lower here. But that's again, because the gain from the river has changed significantly, almost twice more. That is uh, now overall net depletion from the, from the ground, from the river to the groundwater system. On the east side, we've noticed that again, the groundwater change in the storage is lower, so we're checking one box. That is, you know, improving things, but overall, we're not really uh, improving the system. Because we are also increasing the seepage from the river into the groundwater system. As well as subsurface inflows, notice that the subsurface inflows, which is from again, the neighboring basins is also increasing. Uh, this is the blue di- uh, blue bar in here. And again, for more, uh, for those of you who are interested in a lot more detail, I've got this right here. Broken down basically by the Westerlock Sub Basin and the Easterlocks up, uh, I'm sorry, the Western Lock GSA and the. I'm sorry, the Westerloks GSA and the Easterloks GSA and how overall the interaction between the land and the stream and the groundwater system looks like on an average annual over the historical conditions. I also want to draw your attention to the fact that there is subsurface flows between the west and the Easterloks sub-basin. And that was estimated to be approximately 81,000 acre feet on a long-term average basis over the historical condition from 91 to 2015 water years. And when we look at that under the projected conditions, which is the 50 years into the future, we're looking at that same volume of subsurface from the Westerloks GSA to the Easterloks GSA now to the tune of about 103,000 acre feet. So there is approximately 20,000 acre feet more subsurface flow that is moving from the west to the east. And that is other than the changes in the stream aquifer interaction. Notice this one here, the streams were losing on the east side to the tune of about 20,000 acre feet or are project, yeah, historically, they were losing to the tune of about 20,000 acre feet. And under the projections, we're estimating that based on the baseline conditions, the river, both the Merced and the Twolumi rivers would be losing about 50,000 acre feet a year on an average basis. On the west side, if you go back to the historical condition, we were discharging upwards of about 77,000 acre feet to the rivers and to Twolumi and Merced River and San Joaquin for that matter as well. And under the projected conditions, it's only about 13,000 acre feet of discharge and contribution to the river system, so significantly less. So when we look at that and look at it under stream aquifer interaction and what the implications are on the river. More charts in here, again, showing the historical condition and the baseline conditions. These are for Twolumi, San Joaquin and Merced rivers. And the lighter blue or the lighter colors are showing what's discharged from the groundwater system to the river system. And the positive is seepage losses from the rivers to the groundwater system. And so notice that historically, we had higher bars in Twolumi River, meaning higher lighter bars in here, which means we were discharging more than we were losing along Twolumi River. And notice that in the future projections, that cycle changes. And so the darker bars are more frequent and higher. And that means the river system is going to be losing more than gaining. That same thing is true in San Joaquin, not as much, not significant changes, but definitely in the Merced River. Look at the Merced River in here. Merced was gaining in many years and losing in those years as well. This is all depending on the reach of the Merced River, right? The upper reaches and the lower reaches and the timing and all of that. But this is all summarized on an annual basis. When we look at the future projection, Merced River for the most part is going to be losing under the current projection of the baseline. And so when does that happen? At least on the Twolumi River, this is what's happened in the future, in the historical condition. And this is what's happening in the future. These are, these are stream flows in CFS for Twolumi River at Modesto. When we look at the exceedance chart, which is the percent of time that any flow is exceeded, the orange shows the historical condition and the baseline is shown in blue. What this means is during low flow conditions, there's going to be a whole lot less low flow conditions in the Twolumi River at Modesto. Same type of condition is happening in Merced River at Stevenson. And so there's a whole lot less flow at Stevenson under the projected conditions compared to the historical. So that all sort of is taking us to a point that under the baseline condition, baseline projected conditions, we are not going to be in a situation of sustainable condition. And so as such, we need to take some actions. And those actions, we're going to talk about in just a minute. But before I get there, I'd like to look at same type of conditions if the climate change occurs. And so what we did was under the climate change, this is a lot of verbiage in here. I'm just going to summarize it for you folks. What DWR and the regulations are asking for is to take a look at what happens under a 2030 and also under a 2070 projected conditions. And so we've taken all of the data, all of the information that's available from the DWR, both in terms of the rainfall conditions and the projections under the 2070 climate patterns, as well as the temperature conditions under the 2070 projections and the climate patterns. And so we've incorporated that, that all came in from what DWR has done. They looked at the global sort of global circulation models and they downscaled that to Central Valley. And then we've taken the Turlock sub-basin specific rainfall pattern changes and the temperature changes which affect the evapotranspiration. And we've used all of that in the model. What does that mean? What that means is the rainfall patterns are projected under the particular climate change scenario that we looked at. The rainfall patterns are projected to be more during winter time. We're going to have a whole lot more in terms of rain as opposed to snowmelt, but just in general, more rain during the winter time. And then during summertime, it's going to be drier. And so rainfall is going to be much less during the irrigation season. And that is the difference between the dark one, which is the climate scenario and the light blue. And the same thing, the effects of the temperature changes, you know, not that much different during winter time. These are months, basically. And but during summertime, irrigation season, we're going to have higher temperature and so higher ET. We've estimated that, you know, the net effect of the rainfall over long term is approximately, I believe it is 10% more rainfall and approximately 13% more temperature change and higher ET. Or that may be the reverse. I beg your pardon, I don't remember the exact numbers right now, but my colleague is here and he can help me if that question comes up. So what happens under the changes during, you know, as a result of the climate change? You remember the change in the storage line that I showed you before, the historical condition in blue in here? And the projected changes in the groundwater storage is the orange in here. And so the yellow is under the climate change pattern. So we're going to have significantly more draw from the storage, from the groundwater storage. What we've estimated as a groundwater deficit on the long-term average under the baseline was 8,000 acre feet. Under the climate change is going to end up to be 19 or 20,000 acre feet. So almost about more than twice as much draw on the system. So like I said, that all points to not, not a great, you know, scenario in terms of projections based on all of the different indicators that we have, based on all of the different data sets and information that we have and in terms of projections on the climate conditions and so on, so forth. So what does it take to bring the basin into sustainable condition? This is the next sort of section in the memo that we also presented. And that is the sustainable yield estimation. What is a sustainable yield? So we've estimated sustainable yield. Sustainable yield is basically the groundwater production that is available under, you know, the definition by the Sigma. And that is how much water we can draw from the system, from the groundwater system without causing undesirable results. We've used the model to do that. We've looked at, you know, groundwater in storage to mitigate any overdraft conditions. We've looked at groundwater levels to make sure that we're not violating the minimum thresholds that are set based on the sustainable management criteria. And we've also looked at that in terms of interconnected surface water to make sure that we're not drawing significantly more water from the river system, specifically Twolumi and Merced rivers to induce more water from these two rivers. And also looked at land subsidence and we used subcore groundwater levels as a proxy for that. So the model, basically, if we look at the six undesirable results or the six sins under Sigma, we basically focused on three of them. The first one, the second one, chronic lowering of the groundwater levels and the reduction in the groundwater storage. And the sixth one, which is depletions of the interconnected surface water. And the other three, of course, seawater intrusion does not apply to us, but degraded water quality and land subsidence, we use proxy information to synthesize the information. So to that end, we looked at two groups of entities, ag entities and the urban entities. We looked at those who are contributors to the groundwater system and those who are basically net drawing from the groundwater system, not only based on the historical condition, but also based on the projected estimates. And I showed those to you earlier in the previous slides. And so when we look at those who are contributing, that's basically folks who have access to surface water. And so they're using a mix of the groundwater and the surface water to supply their needs. And then the areas that are net extractors from the groundwater system are this group two in here, which is basically shown in the green area. And so we've looked at, and we did a lot of analysis, a lot of different sensitivity and scenarios to look at what does it take to reduce pumping in either of these two areas? You know, the sort of the net contributors and then the next extractors and so on, so forth. We looked at reduction in the groundwater pumping use over time in a magnitude that would bring the basin into sustainable condition based on the parameters and the criteria that I defined for you in the previous slide there. Meaning looking at leveling the groundwater storage, looking at making sure that we are not substantially exceeding or deviating from the minimum thresholds that we've set, as well as making sure that the river system, Twolumi and Merced in particular, are not affected as much. And so the results were looking at the sustainable conditions. The sustainable yield of the system is estimated to be 311,000 acre feet a year. That means the total draw from the system over long-term average annual conditions should be limited to 311,000 acre feet a year with certain years that we would be pumping less because there's a lot going to, there are going to be wet years basically. And there are going to be certain years that we're going to be pumping more. But overall, at a long-term average, we need to be aiming at approximately 311,000 acre feet in order to meet those sustainability criteria. The current projection is we're going to be at about 414,000 acre feet if we do not do anything. So that's quite a bit. Notice it's about more than about 100,000 acre feet that needs to be, needs to be reduced in terms of groundwater use in order to make sure that the basin stays in balance. And so at least the current, you know, one version that we've looked at and that was, that was the version that gave the sort of most optimum scenario was 12% reduction in the urban areas, 12% reduction in groundwater use and about 40% reduction in groundwater use on the east side. So that's what we call demand reduction. That's the extreme case. We're going to be looking at that extreme case and trying to shave off of this extremity by implementing projects and management actions. And by projects, we mean any other surface water supply projects that can be looked at in combination of local water resources, capturing additional rainfall, capturing additional runoff from the local watersheds and making sure that all makes it into the groundwater system on the east side, as well as any other sources of water that could potentially be available to the lands on the east side in lieu of groundwater use, meaning supply surface water to the ag folks to reduce groundwater system and basically put them on dual system, both from possibly Merced as well as Turlock irrigation districts. There are discussions that are taking place, as well as looking at demand reduction, meaning additional irrigation efficiency or potentially taking some land out of production. So those are all being looked at right now as we speak. And so we're going to be bringing all of those back to you folks in the near future. So I just want to summarize to say that the model was developed in a collaborative manner. It's open, transparent, and many people have evaluated it and commented on the accuracy of the model. It provides a pretty robust analysis tool to make sure that the sustainability of the system is properly evaluated. And the water budgets reflect the regulatory requirements right now. And the GSA level water budgets reflect what are the projected changes in the dynamics of the groundwater system in, not only in the sub-basin, but also within each one of the GSAs. The projected groundwater use exceeds the sub-basin sustainable yield, like I said, to the tune of about 100,000 acre feet. And so we need to be looking at both the supply side as well as the demand side projects and management actions to make sure that the basin becomes sustainable over the projection, projected conditions. So with that, I'd like to stop that presentation and open it up to questions and comments and thoughts.
I saw you had your hand raised there for a second. You had a question or comment?
Hey Ali, this is Curtis from Hillmore County Water District. First off, thank you for the presentation. I think there's a lot of good information in there. One of the questions that I had was, you know, you speak a lot about the projections, how they fit into the GSP plan itself. When we look at this and we put it all together, yes, we're trying to do it per the rules of Sigma and all of that. What if our projections are way off? You know, what if we get five years into this, two, 10 years into this? How do we handle or how do we deal with, say, a big discrepancy? Something happens to where our numbers are way off and it doesn't look like what you've put together for us this evening?
Very good question, Curtis. So as I suggested, the projections are currently based on what we know today of what's going to happen. Nobody can, nobody can look at, you know, 50 years into the future in terms of even land use and cropping pattern, population projections, developments and so on, so forth, let alone the hydrology. Nobody knows what's going to happen to the hydrology and the rainfall, right? So we are projecting based on what we know today. We are going to be monitoring the conditions on an annual basis. More than that, actually, more frequently, the groundwater levels, the groundwater quality is going to be monitored over the course of the next five years. And so we have an option and we will definitely have to come up with an update of the GSP in five years. The groundwater sustainability plans are supposed to get updated every five years. And we have 20 years to implement and get to a point of sustainability. We're not going to just put projects in place right away. We're not going to reduce demand right away. We've got 20 years to kind of ease our way into that. But by year 20 means within 20 years, which means year 2042, we're supposed to be showing sustainability. And we need to show incremental improvement to the department, the DWR, on an annual basis. And so, yes, we are going to be looking at better information, more accurate information, hopefully better projections in five years and in 10 years and kind of navigating our way through that over time. So we have that opportunity, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. And honestly, you know, as we implement projects, you know, the dynamic of the groundwater and surface water system and the dynamics of the overall, you know, development and everything is going to change. So those monitoring and additional data that we collect are all going to reflect the dynamics of the growth patterns and future projections as well.
Okay, and, and that's, that's basin as a whole, right? So if, if we're seeing changes on the west. Uh, maybe in the negative and they're seeing positive changes on the east, it, it all falls into the same plan as. We're bonded together for the life of this thing or until they tell us to change how we're doing it, correct?
So currently the sub-basin uh boundaries are defined as such, as you've seen, you know, the east side and west side together. But each one of you folks are a separate GSA. So the reporting to the DWR is not only by the sub-basin as a whole, but potentially is by the each GSA as well. So in as much as the entire sub-basin and the GSAs are kind of tied at the hip, so to speak. Because of the dynamics uh of the groundwater system and the surface water system. Yet there is roles responsibilities and, you know, uh, uh, you know, differences in, in. In how each GSA operates and their means uh in terms of the water supply conditions and so on, so forth. So those all come into the picture and I would imagine that you folks are going to be discussing some level of roles responsibilities. Towards each other as to, you know, who is contributing, who is extracting and so on, so forth. And, and what each one of you folks are going to need to do to make sure that the overall body stays in balance.
And, and there were a couple of slides in your presentation tonight. But do we get that specific in our plan where we're actually looking at? Uh, or, or have the details to say, hey, the, the west is a, a net extractor, the east is a, a net recharger. Is, are those details in the plan or do they have to be in the plan for sigma?
So they are in the groundwater budget memo that we've provided to you folks. Uh, and, and, and the uh technical advisory committee, uh, you know, met and discussed. And they decided that those need to be there uh in the, in the memo. And, and which, which is going to make it into the GSP document as well.
Okay, I, I think that's good information that we, we break that data down. Um, you know, and, and like you said, it's probably a conversation between the east and the west, more so than it is it. At a, a meeting representing the entire sub-basin. Um, but I, I think that's good information that we want to uh make sure is there and, and that both sides are clear as to. Uh, what those budgets look like, not only for the whole of the group. Uh, but for each individual, uh, the west and the east. I just think that makes sense. That's kind of good. Uh, budget practices with finances and it's probably the same with water too, I would assume.
And, and that was uh pretty much almost all of the slides that I showed you today. I mean, the graphics that I showed you on all of the slides. Uh, are, are, are there in, in the memo which we're asking for you folks to, to uh. Uh, to authorize release today.
Okay, thanks, Ali. I appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you.
Ali, that was a great report and I agree with Curtis that we need that detailed water accounting framework. So we can see the complete story and tell the accurate story of everything. Any other permanent comments or questions for Ali?
This is David from De Nier CSD. Ali, um, I'm not sure if I remember the figure correctly, but I believe as an average, you said we were overdrafting. The basin as a whole, somewhere between like 50 and 60,000 acre feet a year. But toward the end, you said that one of the remedies to be sustainable was to cut. Groundwater pumping by a little over 100,000. Can you tell me where the difference in those two numbers is coming from?
So the uh, the projected overdraft is approximately, um. If I remember correctly, eight or 9,000 acre feet uh under the projected conditions, but. Like I said, if you remember the, let me go back in here. Let's just look at the uh basin as a whole, this one. So we are supposed to bring the basin into balance in all aspects that are uh required by. By the regulation and, and the two, and the three major pieces. That we can evaluate directly using this modeling tool and all of the data that we've had, we've got. At our fingertips are the change in the storage. And, and any changes to the groundwater, surface water interaction and the regime. As well as uh implications on the groundwater levels. And so, you know, groundwater storage and groundwater, groundwater storage is kind of much smaller under the projection condition. Compared to the historical, but like I said, that is because we've got a whole lot more water that is now. Uh, seeping down from the rivers that is now projected. Okay, I, I gotta refresh my, I, I remind myself that we're talking about future, right? We are estimating that the river system would be. Uh, would be losing uh a lot more water to the groundwater system to make the ends meet. Okay, and, and so as such groundwater levels, because groundwater levels are going to be lower. We're going to be seeping a whole lot more water from the river system. You understand the dynamics of the two, right? I mean, here's the river system and so if you draw the groundwater system lower, you're going to be inducing a whole lot more water from the river system. And, and so the 100,000 acre feet that I, that we estimated, that is the imbalance. To bring the basin into balance is primarily because of not only bringing the uh groundwater uh storage to zero. But also groundwater levels to above what we, we've set as the minimum thresholds, which are. Uh, the 2015 water level conditions. As well as the river system to be at 2014. Water level conditions so that we don't lose as much from the ground, from the river system into the groundwater system. So we've got three knobs that we need to tweak and turn to make sure that the system is going to be in balance. With respect to three primary indicators. Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, that does. Thank you, Ali.
Ali, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to authorize the release of this chapter five if the board pleases.
All right, I'll make that motion, Joe.
Thank you, Curtis. Is there a second?
Yes, please, a second.
Thank you. Probably moved and said, any further comments, questions or concerns on authorizing or release of chapter five? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, sign. Please, same sign, opposed. Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Hi, Chair Racini. Um, I think we're uh wondering about a motion on the east side. Terlaxa Basin GSA. Chair Racini, are you still there?
Yes. Yeah, the east side has submitted a motion to approve the tax presentation other than what's been talked about. I'll have one of the representatives there for the side taxes go through it. Eric, Kevin?
Yeah, Al, are, are you calling for a motion on the uh, as per the agenda item?
Um. Yeah, east side's motion, west side has approved something already, so.
Right.
We need to talk about it from our side.
Right, you're, you're just asking a motion from one of your board members, correct?
Yes, I want to present the motion that the board presented on, on this issue on, on the water budget.
Okay.
Does Walt Warren, I'll make that motion to approve release of chapter five for public review and comment.
For a second.
Hey, this is Dirk. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Do we want to table this and discuss it with our engineers first or are we ready to uh? At least have this released for now? Just a concern of mine and what's everybody else think?
Uh, I believe it's the recommendation of your technical advisory committee that you go ahead and release it. For, for the public uh comment. Is that right, Sarah?
Yes, that's correct. That's what the tax committee recommended.
Do you understand, Dirk?
Yeah, I do. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. So you want to call a question, Al?
Yeah, I mean, if, if this is what uh came out of our meeting to present tonight, that's, that's scary. You could go up.
This is Dirk. Still need a second.
I think we had a second. It was Lloyd, uh.
Yes.
Director Perea. I believe we can call a roll call vote. Um, if you agree, Chair Racini?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Director Ward?
Yes.
Director Ulrich?
Yes.
Um, Director Altal has not arrived, has he? Hearing none. Forward, Vice Chair Perea?
Yes.
And Chair Racini on the motion to approve.
Okay. Alright.
Was that a yes? Sorry, interrupted you. Thanks. Um, with four eyes, uh, the motion is approved. Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda here, I see we have uh comments from the boards. Is there any comments from the boards?
Not that I know of, so I don't.
Hearing none, we'll proceed to agenda item H, which uh. Chair Racini, I think that's for you to call, but you're uh meeting adjourned.
Pardon?
Uh, agenda item H is a meeting adjourned by the east Turlock Basin GSA.
Yes.
And then I will uh ask for a motion to adjourn to closed session. Uh, we have one item conference with legal, legal counsel and litigation.
And you'll come back out there, huh?
Uh, yes, we will.
Okay, do we stay on this, this account, this number while you go to close?
I believe so.
That's correct.
The ETS GSA uh meeting has adjourned though, so if you um. You can, all board members would like to leave, they are also able to do.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for you in your closed session?
As president, motion to uh move to closed session?
Thank you. Is there a second to go in a closed session?
One second.
Possibly even a second. Is there any comments, questions, concerns? No, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Alright.
All opposed, same time? Okay, we'll move into the closed session. Herb, are you gonna zap us to a closed session room?
Yes, I will, Chair Alamo. I'm just gonna run down the list I have. I've been adding names to this breakout room. I just want to make sure I have everything correct. So just bear with me for a second. Uh, and if I have anything missing, call me out. So going to the closed session for the West Terlaxa Basin GSA. I have Curtis, David, Debbie, Jim Owls, Jennifer Land, Joe Alamo. Karen Morgan, Leandro Maldonado, um, Michael Buck, Michael Clipper, Michael Cook, Miguel Alvarez, Nicole Larson. Richard Lindo, Rodrigo Espinoza, Espinoza, to her, Valerie Kincaid, Vito Chiesa. And the rest I see here, other than Brandon McMillan, who's going to be hanging out in the main room for anyone that hangs behind. Um, everyone else I see is not a member of the West Terlaxa Basin GSA. Uh, staff, council or director. So did I miss anything? Is somebody there that doesn't need to be there? Feel free and let me know now before I zap you over. Alright, sounds good. I'm gonna send everybody to the breakout rooms.
Thanks, Chair. Is it recording?
Yep, we're back and we're recording.
Okay, great.
Wanted Valerie to report out a closed session for us. Go ahead, Val.
Sure, um, in closed session, we um per for section port, 4.4 of the memorandum of agreement. Um, the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA appointed an ad hoc of um. Chair Alamo, Vice Chair Juritzma, members Larson and Odom. To meet with the East Turlock GSA on water accounting issues. And to try to get resolution by the end of September.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
With that, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you for your time and participation.